Before our meeting begins, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Lockhart, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us gather here today. I am glad that we're all in this room together in agreeance that we can all move forward together in this city and make it a better place and find a cooler place in the evening. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Roddington?
Mistress, you have before you the, I got to get it up here, the minutes of our meeting of August 13, 2018. What is your pledge?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Roddington.
I'm willing to accept the minutes in the August 13th meeting at dispensary, the formal reading.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So we turn now to audience participation before presentation that we're going to have. Anyone wishing to address any of the several items of regular business on agenda, please step to the microphone, share with us your name, address, and any thoughts that you might have. Seeing no one, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if it has anything to do with this business, but it's just different, it's just an agenda item. If you have a minute, it's just time.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry.
You're not a regular participant in our meetings, so I don't think it, doesn't sound like it relates to one of our items of agenda business, but go ahead.
Brian Casper, 2007 Cedar Point Road. I just wanted to bring up something about your ordinance that you passed a few months ago about mowing. You passed some legislation that was relatively new. I don't know if it was a few months ago or six months ago or eight months ago, but I just wanted to tell you my situation so that you see it in real life. So I have a little lot. I have 16 parcels that people mow, and I switched mowing companies, and apparently they started mowing 15 of the 16 and not the 16th parcel. I used to pay $35 a week to have it mowed. It's about a tenth of an acre. It's 60 foot by 90 foot, not much bigger than this room. And without any notice that it was overgrowing, I got a bill in the mail for $500, roughly speaking, to remove the weeds that were, in fact, on the lot. And I paid the bill, but I just think it's a bad idea, the way the law is set up or the way the ordinance is set up, where you don't notify someone. It wasted a lot of city time and energy to make a bill, to get equipment, to take it over there. If somebody would have sent me a letter and given me three days to comply, or even a day or seven days or whatever you wanted, we could have avoided a bunch of hassle. And I get that you guys try and stab people that don't, like, you know, mow their lawn, so $500 for a tenth of an acre, but it just, in case you didn't know, the old Cran building that you guys now own has about three foot high weeds, and I calculated it for you. Your bill would be $19,400, and no one would notify you that it happened. It would just happen. So I think you ought to just relook at that. That's all I'd say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Casper. We did adopt that, oh, I'm thinking it was two years ago now, and we, it was not meant to get someone like you so much as it was to the people who are just recidivists. I mean, we would have sent them notices when it got to eight inches. They would then have a couple of weeks to respond. It would be, you know, two feet by the time we got a crew in there that was then able to mow it. And so we adopted the ordinance that we have today, and it worked out pretty well. I'd like to know more about your individual situations. Isn't the place to do it, you know, an email or something like that from you or, yeah, okay, all right. I'll follow with Mr. Wolfser then, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Mr. Casper, I know it's no consolation, but I got paid, I got clipped to the same charge on a property that a very reliable person who mows my property just missed that and failed to do it, and the city came by and mowed it and sent the bill to an LLC that I'm the principal owner of. So it's not, I don't believe it's meant to be punitive, but you can imagine, if we have 1,000 people that don't mow their grasses, I think you and I are the exception that we do, and once in a while it falls to the crack, and we just, we haven't got a mechanism in place to give us absolution from that.
Maybe waving.
We can work on it.
Yeah.
I think we can, I think we can certainly look on that. I'll make a point to talk to staff on if there's some kind of a safety net we can provide.
Mr. Chairman, considering what we're trying to accomplish with this, there's probably a limited number of folks who actually have contractors that do large numbers of properties like this, and it should not be a burden for us to adjust this. There's no reason that you can't get a list, and when you run into those, recognize that the owners probably have no idea that it was missed, and it was missed by accident, and call them and tell them. It just doesn't seem to be that big of a bother for a category of folks who are going way out of their way and paying big money to have this done, and these kind of accidents happen. I can understand. He would have no idea that this occurred.
Well, I'm.
I realize we can't do everybody.
I'm fine with exploring something like that. I think we need to get some direction from staff and, but just don't wait for Brady's fees. I don't want that to happen.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah, you knew. All right.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing on that. Are we sending out notices to people before we actually go and cut it to let them know?
We do not. That was a legislation we adopted.
Okay. That might be something we want to add in there.
Chairman, I think it's on, it's just commercial, correct? Residential?
Mr. Glasgow.
To Mr. President, to the commission, the ordinance we adopted probably over two years ago that went into effect in 2016 was that for any vacant land and/or vacant properties, commercial, industrial, otherwise, will not have notice. All owner-occupied properties or occupied businesses or companies will still be subject to the certified mailing system that we had in place originally. That's how the current ordinance reads.
Okay. All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Casper. Now, we really should have a drum roll for what's coming next, because we have long anticipated a response, a reply, some direction regarding the new Justice Center, and tonight we're going to receive just that. So I understand that Jeff Myers and Sean Barbina are here from DS Architecture to make a presentation, and we have a couple of other interested parties here. Judge, nice to see you here with us, Judge O'Brien, and of course, the chief has had a lot of input, and I know that the committee, the site selection committee included you, your honor, the chief, and Commissioner Twine. There might have been someone else in that committee, but I think that was, that's what I recall. So gentlemen, please proceed to your presentation.
Sure. Jeff Myers, I'm principal architect and owner of DS Architecture. Address is 1020 Huron Road in Cleveland.
Sean Barbina, Studio Director for DS Architecture, same address.
So we've been working with that subcommittee, and that is the correct subcommittee with staff help at looking at different sites across the city. What I'm going to do today is spend a little bit of time talking about the process of how we got to the recommendation that we are currently at. That process, we have evaluated over 20 sites, so we, I think the staff and that subcommittee has done a good job of making sure we take a really hard look at many different options. Little agenda, we'll talk about the context of the project, which is basically finding a home for the new Justice Center, the challenges we came across, our design approach. It was an iterative process of back and forth. I think the subcommittee really did a good job of giving input and direction and thoughts. The analysis of the different sites, what kind of insights we got from each site, the way we tested it and looked at each site, and then finally the fit plan for the recommended These are the red dots of all the different sites that we had studied. Some of them we studied at great length, and some of them where we did out relatively quickly with a rating matrix that we used, where it has different attributes that we're looking for, for a type of facility that is both police and court, such things as rapid egress, is it city-owned, is it developable by economic development? Those different things kind of weigh, really, you know, limited the amount of sites we studied in great, great detail. Obviously, being a police station, we want to make sure that we are located on what's one of the main artery roads of Sandusky. Sandusky is one of the few cities, I forget the number, it might be one of the only last, that has this very unique grid, and if you haven't seen it, it's behind me, it has a lot of angled streets that create these different green spaces. It's a very nice grid from a aesthetic standpoint, but not necessarily as simple to navigate as a standard Roman grid of just crosses. So I wanted to really look at where these sites were in comparison to how the police were going to get out to the city. The simple challenge of the project, and it's hard to read, wash out there, but we have a courthouse, a police station, some auxiliary common spaces that we need to take into account. All in all, we need a lot that will function well for about a 36,000 to 37,000 square foot building. That's where the program is currently. We got to make sure we have enough parking for those functions, both the court and the police. So it's quite not, a quite simple problem. It's not overly complicated until you get into looking at different sites and different configurations of those sites and how you get to the site or away from the site. We like to use the term "design thinking," and this is the iterative process I was talking about that we did with the staff and with subcommittee. And the idea is to get lots of different ideas from different people, and, you know, I may have one opinion, and chief may have another opinion, and the judge definitely is going to have his opinion, and we're all going to talk about those opinions, and then we're going to come together and converge, and then we're going to test and challenge those again with more thoughts. So there's a lot of interviews that went on where my team, you know, challenged appropriately the staff and the subcommittee to really think about things in a different, unique way that they maybe have not, and they also have a lot of insight, because at the end of the day, this is the city's building, and they're the ones who are going to operate it. So it was an iterative process. We took a hard look at the 2018 Vision Plan. We did an exercise where we highlight all the different comments that we think and how they might apply to different locations. So, you know, really, you have, you have three, maybe four stakeholders. You have the courts, the police, the commissioners, and then you have the public. And I think at this level, the public's really speaking through that 2018 Vision Plan. So then we took all those different ideas and posted them up for the different sites, this little blown-in area here, and really trying to make sure that we're paying respect to all that work was done for that 2018 Vision Plan, and depending on what sites we were going to really do an analysis on and how deep, we wanted to be influenced, or at least be cognitive of the different ways the city and the public were viewing those areas. There are some common, I'm going to flip here. There were some common themes throughout the 2018 Vision Plan and talking with our subcommittee. Obviously, number one is safety. We want the police to be a community policing, is the new word that's used throughout the country, where the police stations are much more inviting, where the police are looked as an aide. So we want to make sure that we had a good spot where people could view the station, but at the same time also making sure that you have private people coming into a public building, and how does that interaction work? There's lots of talks about outdoor activities and how could a project like this maybe offer some other types of public space, art, plazas, or even maybe an amphitheater. Connection with the city, I kind of alluded to that on that one diagram that was showing all the arterial roads and how they connect, but we needed to connect the downtown quickly, connect to Cedar Point, and make sure we can communicate with the city staff. So those are all important. There's thoughts of after-school programs and how that might be part of this, basketball, splash pads, restrooms, could that be something that a site could afford to have amenities for? And then also, the idea of sightseeing was something that was talked a lot about in the 2018 Vision Plan. There were, out of those 20, there were three sites, and I say three, and I'll talk about a fourth, that really kind of made their way to the top. There's a Tiffin Avenue site, which is over by the juvenile correction facility, the American Crayon site, and then the PNC and Marigot Round site. I think it's important to note that the city went out for an RFQ/RFP process, I guess it's RFP process, for people to submit land that they would like studied and/or like to sell, and the only response came from the Marigot Round Museum. So that's one of the reasons we really took a hard look at that. It also met a lot of our criteria, criteria of being downtown and close to the new location of the city administration building. These three sites are the ones we really dove into, and we did what we call a fit plan for each. So a fit plan is a space grab of how much square foot we need, how many levels we'll need, how many parking spaces we'll need, what type of issues the site might have. There might be utility easement issues, there might be setback issues, there might be parking issues. So we really dove into each of these three sites quite a bit. The first iteration, it was at the Marigot Round Museum, and we looked both at connecting to the Marigot Round Museum, as those are the top two right, and how those additions might occur, and how the parking might work, and we looked, we also looked quickly at if we didn't take the Marigot Round Museum and just used the PNC site. We also did something very similar at the American Crayon site, and you can see that the site on the bottom right has ample room for the needs of both the Justice Center and then potentially other city functions with a lot of green space or activity space that could be programmed. From there, we were asked to really dive into the Marigot Round Building and really understand how, from a functionality standpoint, the court and the police station could accommodate itself within that existing building with additions. So we did a full analysis and creation of existing drawings to understand the different spaces, placing the spaces into that building and seeing how they would fit. Our third site, well, it's actually our fourth site, is the Cardinal Property Site, which is in downtown. It was something that came up on the horizon as a potential. That site quickly was rolled out in comparison to the top two, which was the PNC, Marigot Round Museum, and the American Crayon site, but we did want to show that we did study that site. We then went back for a fourth iteration, or another look at the Marigot Round Museum, and what could we do if we truly did not touch the Marigot Round Museum? How could we, what size building would we need to get all the parking on site? So you can see on the bottom left, a two-story building, in the middle, a four-story building, and off to the right, a five or six-story building. In talking with the judge and the chief, they were both very concerned about anything above two stories, and their preference would be to be on a one-story building. They think, and I do agree with them, that there's a lot of functionality that can be positive about a one-story building. There are ways to solve it in a two, three, four, but when you get up to a three, four, or five-story building, it's not very conducive for their operations or for the public to visit it. We then took another harder look at the American Crayon site. We started to really think about these public amenities and started to talk to the Recreation Department and seeing what type of amenities they may want. One of the things that is very important is the idea of tournament-level tennis courts, of seven tennis courts being on the site. There's been talk, I guess, since the early 2000s about, you know, at some point having a central home for recreation. Is that a building? Is that, is it just ball fields? Is it a small office building? None of that's known yet, but this site at American Crayon lends itself to more than just a Justice Center. Then we went back to PNC one more time with the notion that we had to be a two-story building and what that would look like. The, I guess, the fatal flaw of this site and the reason that we're, and I'll talk about a little bit more, recommending the American Crayon site, is that the amount of parking that we would need to push off the site into the streets around the city was too great in order to get a one or a two-story building. So that's where we ended up really, really honing in on the American Crayon site. The site's on what some are calling the Healthy Hayes Corridor. It's bookend by two hospital systems. It also is very close to the new schools and also the Catholic School. So the idea of a police station, a courthouse, and public amenities, recreation, all being right off this corridor, started to make a lot of sense. We did an in-depth zoning analysis of the site to make sure we were adhering to the setbacks of the area, the height of the area, the parking regulations of the area, all those different things. And we actually did this analysis for the other two, but wanted to show in depth what we did for the American Crayon site. These are some diagrammatic or urban design concepts. I have my Masters of Urban Design, and it's very important when you're doing this type of project that you think beyond the site, and you think about how it's affecting the surrounding sites and even how it connects to the downtown. So to the south of us, the site is a residential zone, and how do we make sure we give enough buffer space for that? There is a gas line that runs right through the middle of the site, that's that red line right below the first bottom or left site that says AC site. We have a railroad track that's right there, and we have the underpass. So there's a lot going on right there. Then we started looking at ways to try to solve that, how we might orient the building or the site to, you know, maybe not have to remove the gas line and rebuild it, how we make sure we're, you know, giving a buffer to the residential, but at the same time giving our building a buffer from the railroad tracks. So all those things started to come into play. I know this looks finalized, but I promise you, in three years, when this, when this building opens ideally, the building won't look like this. It's just, this is really an in-depth, to show we can fit how many parking spaces, how we might fit the site amenities. We're showing maybe pickleball courts, basketball courts, we're showing maybe a splash pad. At the bottom left, we're showing a potential plaza that might have some history of the city or the departments. But most importantly, the thing that we want to focus on is making sure we had ample room for the courthouse, which is in the top left, and then the police station, which is in the middle left. And those other things, everything else that's there is future somehow, and the rec center or the building there is dashed on purpose to say, we don't know what that is. I couldn't tell you right now if there's 30 basketball courts in there or two basketball courts. We just know that there's a building that could fit there, and I think that's important for the commission to take into account as, you know, we're looking to get, you know, our recommendation voted on, I believe, today, Eric, and approved. So that this site is owned by the city. I think that's very important. We're going to save money. We don't have to go buy the American, the PNC site or the Marigot Round site. It's been through all the clean, the cleaning of phase, phase ones and phase twos is through the EPA, so it's ready to go. So there's a big cost savings with going in with this site, and there's a lot of future potential with the site that the other sites did not offer. With that, I'll turn it over to questions, unless anybody on staff or in the subcommittee wants to add anything they think I missed.
Well, I know that's a lot to put your arms around.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I wonder, I know this question is really front-running the whole process, but any kind of a timeline would be important, I think, to all of us, and not to nail you down to a specific timeline of opening the doors. You mentioned three years, but the facility that we're in now has to stay functional after we leave until you open the doors of that building. So there are some advantages to slowing this process down, there may be some advantages to speeding it up. I just wondered, do you have a, do you have a, just a ballpark idea of how long this would take?
Yeah, absolutely. Once we're through this meeting here, Aaron and the staff will develop what's called the RFQ process, Request for Qualifications. In the state of Ohio, architects are selected based upon qualifications. You usually get anywhere between five to 10 respondents of that. From there, they'll shortlist down to three and then negotiate with the preferred after the interviews. That process itself is going to take probably until the end of this year, early next year. Then you have about, let's say, 10 to 14 months of design work. You got to get all the civil engineering, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, all that engineering done, and we're, we're going to be going, this project, talking to the staff, is going to be a design-bid-build project that gives the most ability for the city and administration and the commissioners to have the most control over the project. The design-build is good for something, a much simpler project, maybe like a salt storage building or something like that. The design-bid-build allows the owner to have complete control over the project all the way through, where a design builder, a construction manager at risk, you give over that control to the design builder or the construction manager at risk, and for a police station, we would never recommend that. So, you know, we're maybe, we're getting done with drawings February of 2020. Ideally, we're going out to bid there, and you're somewhere between 16 and 24 months of construction. Yeah. So that's, that's the general timeline that, you know, I think you guys should have in mind as we move forward.
Okay, so literally, you're talking about three or four years?
Yes.
So could Mr. Wolfser, Mr. Glasgow, maybe we could have some clarification. I knew we were having a presentation tonight, and I'm a firm believer in following the process that we laid out a long time ago. We created a site selection committee to look at these evaluations, and we've hired some fine professionals to go through that process, and we've arrived at a conclusion. So I'm fully prepared to support that conclusion. Tonight, are we being, is it proposed that we would vote on selecting this site?
The commission president to the rest of the commission, I think the recommendation the staff would be for sort of a roll call to select this site and to ask us to take the next steps necessary to move to the next phase of this site.
Mr. Chairman, before I do that, thank you for the presentation. Based on what you presented, the conclusion of going, ending up at the, at that site, that does make sense. I am curious, though, what the criteria was that you decided at the very beginning, how you came up with, what is this supposed to, how's this supposed to turn out regarding, you never talked, excuse me, this is confusing even a little bit to me, because you gave me so much information. You didn't talk about how this improves the police service and how this location relates to providing that. And so you don't have to tell me tonight, but before this gets to the end, I'd like to know that we're moving this to this location because the police service is going to be better this way, that way, or whatever it is you came up with. Having room for basketball courts and things are nice that we can discuss later, but that's really what I was looking for. Additionally, you, there's a slide at the beginning that talks about the size of the rooms, size of each areas. Before we're done with this, could I get what we have existing now? Thirty-seven thousand square feet is what it's going to take. I'd like to be able to compare and contrast, and so I can see what improvements we're making with this change. But other than that, the site selection is as good as any. We're only a mile deep. It's tough to be in the wrong location, unless you get out on the far fringes.
I, you know, to the first question, I would, I'd like to turn it over to the chief, if he wants to answer any of that. I mean, he had a lot of insight on that. I know that we did look at response times and the ability to get out and about through the city in a quick manner. To be quite honest, this location for a police station is kind of isolated from a major portion of the city, getting something more central, which this is, north, south, east, west, I think, was a big, big factor in that. Do you want to add anything about functionality or how you perceive the site?
Just based on the other sites, this site came out to be the best. Ideally, we would have liked to have been in the downtown district, but it just wasn't conducive to having enough room, especially for the parking and for us to get out. The Hays Ave site, obviously, the ingress and egress is going to be, we're going to be able to get to Perkins Ave or downtown or on the east end relatively quickly through the main thoroughfares. And there's a largest percentage of our calls for service are in Zone 2, which is from Hays Ave to Mills, and the second bulk is, you know, Hays Ave to Sycamore Line. So we're like right in the middle of probably 68 to 70% of our calls, roughly. So that had factors in it as well. The original site out on Tiffin Ave, we're way west, and we would have been, had a struggle to get to anywhere else in town. So that's a large portion of why this site got selected.
I'll let Sean answer the question about the functionality and size of space compared to what we have now versus what we're projecting.
Yeah, thank you. So we did extensive interviewing and studying on this existing building when we made that first recommendation a couple of years ago, but after looking at all the at all the spaces and interviewing the entire police staff and figuring out how large of a space each one would need, as well as how they utilize their existing spaces, they're about equal as in what's currently here at this building and what they need. It's just the efficiency is not here within this building. And being spread out and the way the building is shaped isn't really conducive to the way they proceed in their processes. So as far as square footage wise, I mean, it's about equal is what we had. Anything else?
Just to kind of reiterate, the functionality, the way this building is laid out with some of its structural walls, and it's got a lot of structural walls to it, makes it very difficult to renovate. But it's also functionality, not just the police station, but also the courts will be much more functional in the way they can coordinate with each other.
Yeah. The court has the larger of the dysfunction that we found, having everyone split on different, as in space. Sorry, as in space, yeah.
Don't worry, it doesn't have any jurisdiction.
Being separated from each other, having to go up and down flights of stairs or at the other ends of buildings, just the functionality of being close to, close knit is not within this building.
So tomorrow's newspaper is likely to have a copy of this drawing that was last up on the screen. And I want to make it clear to the public that as we look at this drawing, which is, it's exciting to get to the end of the process and have a conclusion about where we're going to go. But this isn't going to be a, it's really hard to read, but it isn't going to be a, what was I even saying? It's so dark. It isn't going to be, whatever the square footage is here, 12,000 or 10,000, isn't necessarily going to be those. Obviously, we're going to go through, oh, we're going to go through, oh, thank you, Wes. We're going to go through a whole long, much more detailed process, developing drawings, working with those architects to figure out exactly what we want. We did a space analysis, I don't know, three years ago now, when we made the decision to ultimately leave from this building. We had a rough idea of what we had, no, exactly what we had, rough idea of what we need. We're getting again a rough idea of what we need here. But when we actually draw the drawings, I mean, I think it'll end up being relatively close to these numbers, but whether or not there's a rec center built, a splash pad, tennis courts, or a pickleball court, I mean, these are all many, many, many decisions to be decided down the road. Some of them, I'm sure will involve the Sandusky City Schools because they're looking to replace their tennis courts. And this is a good way that many communities have been able to kind of share that expense and that asset. And, you know, all this will have to be, all these other parts and pieces will have to be funded at some point, but it's a pretty exciting thing to be able to anticipate and plan towards. So this is a really big decision and a lot of information. I don't want to make sure I don't cut off any of the commissioners that want to make more comments or have questions.
Mr. Chairman. Last comment, just as this goes forward, the public needs to understand that we're getting a new building that serves a purpose beyond just providing a different place for the chief to hang his hat. So describe this in terms of what the improvements are going to be, how we're going to benefit from it. And as I said before, the site that you selected is fine, makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the recommendation of the committee that we put in charge of site selection and choose this location to begin the process.
I think he's finished, Mr. Winding. Was that a second of the whole thing?
I thought he was done.
He winds on sometimes. There's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
The motion is adopted. And thank you, gentlemen, and the members of the planning site selection committee for all of your work over quite a few years. We are grateful to you, and we are happy to support the conclusion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have a number of communications recommending various pieces of legislation from staff. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those communications?
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. But objection, motion be approved. I'm hearing no objection. The motion is approved. Return to the consent agenda items. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to have placed on the regular agenda? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the, I'm sorry, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A on the consent agenda is a change order number one and final for the 2017 residential demolition project with Master Renovations Incorporated, which is a $40.00 deductible. Item B is the annual cooperative purchasing agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Item C is an appropriation amendment, the third of 2018. Item D is change order number two for the Cedar Point Ejector Station improvements with Hank's Plumbing and Heating. It's an $11,813.71 deductible. Item E is a change order number one and final for the Lincoln Street Ladder and Sewer Replacement Project with Edward Dew and Company. It's a $9,943.87 deductible to that contract. Item F is authorization to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Buchanan Street Reconstruction Project. Item G is authorization to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Thorpe Drive Culvert Replacement Project. And item H is the sale of property to Habitat for Humanity through the Land Acquisition Program.
Thank you. Commissioners, having heard the various items on the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items A through H, declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through H, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion first base?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the resolutions and ordinances.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions and ordinance are adopted. Mr. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Item one is an ordinance authorizing and approving a consulting and brokerage agreement with the Ashley Group of Sandusky, Ohio, for the administration of the city's health insurance program for the period November 1, 2018, through October 31, 2021.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Soloway, maybe you could give the public and the commissioners an overview of what it is we're considering here, please.
Yep, this is a renewal of the contract that we have with the Ashley Group for health insurance, brokerage, and consulting services. As you may recall, we were in a health insurance pool, and in 2015, we had made that decision to basically step away from the pool and sell fund ourselves. As part of that process, we went through a competitive process and selected the Ashley Group to be our sort of partner in that. And we've had a great three years with the Ashley Group, and we just want to continue that relationship. And they help us quite a bit with day-to-day health insurance issues.
So, and to be clear, Mr. Soloway, it's been a little while since, obviously, a year or so since we looked at it, right? So they help us to purchase insurance. They're not providing the insurance. They just represent us
Correct.
in that process. And then they also assist us with the claims adjustment processes that goes along.
Yep, and they help with plan design. They help us with, you know, better ways that we can be more economical with prescriptions, those kind of things. They meet with the health insurance committee that we have here that's part, you know, has the different, all three unions are members of that. So they're able to, you know, meet with everybody here regularly to kind of provide those kind of updates. And they meet with Nick Gerber, who's in the audience here tonight. He meets with me on a monthly basis. And we kind of work on more of the financial side of things, how the plan is working, how it's being funded, how much is being paid in claims, what the balances in the health insurance funds. So we work on more of the number side of things. And then the HR department kind of deals with more of the claims issues. So the Ashley Group provides a lot of resources and assistance in both those avenues.
Commissioners, questions or comments? So I know that you also work with the finance committee to look at the ultimate placement of insurance. They were the committee that you worked with to make the decision that came back to the commission with their recommendation to move out of that old pool. And the last I recall, it's been a little while since I asked you about this, but the last I recall, I think we did pretty well moving away from that pool and have been able to keep a better lid on our healthcare costs. Any comments along those lines?
Absolutely. I think that was probably one of the best decisions the city commission has made since I've been here. That was such a great idea to get out of that pool. We've been able to really get control of our claims and just get a much better understanding of, you know, what's covered and what's not, just how to better manage that on a day-to-day basis. And I think Nick would sort of agree that that was obviously a really good decision for us to be on our own, and we're able just to control that a lot better. So that's correct.
Well, I know you and the finance committee made that recommendation, pushed that to us to consider. So we do appreciate that work. Commissioners, questions or comments? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a software license and services agreement with BSA Incorporated of Bath, Michigan, for the purchase, installation, and data migration for a new software management solution for use by the planning department and divisions of building and code enforcement, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. I don't know who wants to crack at this one. I see three of you are on the communication. So, Mr. Hamilton, maybe you could walk us through what we're getting ourselves into this time.
Through you, Commissioner President. This agenda is requesting funds to replace our current software that manages our code enforcement, building, and zoning departments. This is how we track all of our zoning within the city, all our code violations, remediations, rental information, building department info, permits, plans, all those kind of things. The total cost of this solution is not to exceed $111,145, which will cover the licensing implementation costs and all the date conversion costs. We've been limping along since I got here on a very old, outdated, and pretty much non-functional software solution. One of the first tasks I got when I joined here was to replace it with something that's functional, that helps the residents communicate with us, keep track of what's going on, and also bring up efficiencies for staff. That's what this solution is designed to do. It will take all of us, the services we do, put them online. The residents will clearly see what's going on. They'll be able to pay for everything online and track it as it happens. We got here by doing an RFP at the tail end of 2017, went through a selection committee. We got seven respondents to the RFP, and BS and A came out top across the board. So that's how they ended up getting selected for this, to bring a modern solution that we can actually use to make it more productive as a city.
So maybe you could give me an example. You indicated that the public will be able to see how it is that's being handled. So if there's a code complaint that's lodged, is that something that's visible online?
Yes.
And then as that progresses and there are responses back and forth, is that also available online?
Yep. So imagine you're walking along, you take a picture of a pothole. You'll be able to report it through this or a code violation or something like that. Your account will get notified any time there's an update to say it was a building plan each time it's signed off on or edited. You'll be able to track that online. You'll be able to submit it online, pay for it online. It will stop people having to traipse down to City Hall to talk to somebody for everything they do. And you'll see the process from start to finish.
Wow. That's really impressive. Questions or comments? Mr. Paul.
I'm sorry, how soon is this going to happen?
Through Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, we will, once, if this is approved, we hope to be, if we can push it hard enough, have the base of it up and running by the turn of the year, the definitely first quarter of next year. This is a big project. We've got to get it right first time.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, commissioners? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. And I realized, going back on item one, I flubbed that, didn't I? I asked for a vote on the motion, but it's just the first reading. So, but it's clear enough, is it not, Mr. Trevor or Ms. Haber, that that'll come back for the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Item number three, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item three is an ordinance approving the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of property located at 1421 Forest Drive and identified as parcel number 58-02602.000, ratifying the execution of the purchase and sale agreement for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Three-way time, Mrs. Cresser, you call it. Then a motion and second. Mr. Lasko, why don't you present this item and the next one because they're obviously related, and we'll just talk about those at the same time, if that's all right with you.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the commission, as mentioned, item three and item four are fairly related. And just as a little bit of a backdrop, I know we all went through the neighborhood initiative planning process at this point, maybe about 12 to 18 months ago. And one of the elements of that planning process was to do sort of housing typology. And interventions from a housing standpoint were recommended in the six neighborhoods, everything from sort of widespread, wide-scale, large-scale demolition to possibly housing stabilization. And then other neighborhoods were sort of primed for potentially new infill housing based on the market dynamics. As it relates to the South Side neighborhood, which is where this property is located, not exclusively, but one of the larger recommendations was a large-scale acquisition and demolition of a good section of the housing stock based on construction type and condition of property at the time. So the city and our partners with the county have been looking for several means of acquiring and demolishing property all throughout the South Side neighborhood, more specifically, the area that surrounds Churchill Park. We've been acquiring that property through various methods, whether it's state auditor sale, foreclosures, or just purchase and sale agreements with property owners that want to sell. In this particular instance, the property of 1421 Forest, owned by a gentleman by the name of Andrew Schlatterer, he's recently listed the property for sale. What's interesting about this property is it's potentially the largest property from an acreage standpoint in the Churchill Park area. It's .58 acres. And it sits just north of two vacant lots that are owned by the city of Sandusky through state forfeiture from a couple of months ago. So the first piece of legislation is actually asking the city commission to ratify an already executed purchase and sale agreement that has been executed with a condition that it must be approved by the city commission. What we're also looking to do at the same time is immediately sell that property to the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation, which will move forward with demolition of the property after it's delivered to the city vacant. So the city's purchase would be for $26,000 less closing costs, or in addition to that closing cost. That would be purchased through a combination of neighborhood initiative funds and issue AQ development capital funds. We would sell that to Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation for $5,000, which is the most that the county can be reimbursed from an acquisition standpoint by the state. So we view that difference of about $21,000 as sort of the savings to a city or an offset to the city for what would have been a more expensive demolition of that property. So again, we're looking for both a ratification of our purchase, but then also a approval of a purchase and sale agreement with the county. Those, the purchase and the sale would happen simultaneously on We would sell that to Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation for $5,000, which is the most that the county can be reimbursed from an acquisition standpoint by the state. So we view that difference of about $21,000 as sort of the savings to a city or an offset to the city for what would have been a more expensive demolition of that property. So again, we're looking for both a ratification of our purchase, but then also a approval of a purchase and sale agreement with the county. The purchase and the sale would happen simultaneously on the same day, so we'd basically be in an ownership position for a couple of minutes, basically, sometime in September.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Lasco, my compliments on the purchase price. I owned property there 25 or 30 years ago, and when I knew this was coming to fruition, I looked up and found that I was paying about $10,000 per unit 30 years ago. So you're buying this at what I think is a great price. You're really depressing prices in that market right now. And I think we're benefiting from that.
Additional questions or comments? Good work. Thank you for doing this. And I don't know who brought it to your attention, I don't know if that was something that you caught or our intrepid neighborhood, I can't remember.
It was talent on this one as well, yes.
I couldn't remember its title, darn it. I'm good, so talent's keeping an eye on things, and I appreciate that. I mean, the South Side neighborhood, those poor residents there have been beleaguered by awful landlords for years, and I think it's just so important that we continue this process of acquiring these properties when they become available, and eventually can provide good housing in that area. And I don't know what Brady is doing down there, but it can't be...
You're not talking about me, are you?
Do you own, are you a bad property owner in that area?
I said I formerly was a bad...
Formerly. You formerly were a bad property owner, you saw that.
I agree.
Okay, that's good. But thank you. Additional questions or comments? Okay, Mrs. Cresser, would you call the role beginning with the landlord at the end of the table? Former.
This one? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to purchase 20 Motorola APX 900 Model II portable radios and accessories from Motorola Solutions of Chicago, Illinois, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Lieutenant, is there anything you'd like to add to our discussion tonight? The Chief tonight?
Through President Murray to Commissioners, I'd just like to say that the radios we currently use are 16 years old, they're analog-based, this will allow us to move to the latest technology and all be digital, hopefully eliminate some of the dead spots we have in the far reaches of town, and be able to be more compatible with the Erie County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, good. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Please poll the Commissioners on the motion, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item number six is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Columbus-Scott-Campbell intersection project Phase III, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the City Manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Klein, maybe you could take a minute to walk us through this third phase of the Campbell Street-Scott Street-Columbus-FH intersection project.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, to the Commissioners. Several years ago, when the city started the bicentennial process, this intersection was a huge focus on where improvements were needed. So staff immediately started seeking different grant opportunities. Two of those, the first one was through OPWC, the second one was through ODOT, through their active transportation program. The problem was, we rewarded both, but the problem was that the timing of both of them did not coincide with each other. So the first project, which was the OPC-funded, OPWC-funded project that was the resurfacing of Campbell Street, that was obviously recently completed. Now we're looking to move forward with the further improvements of that intersection at Columbus, Scott, and Campbell. And we did the first project to make sure we accommodated this second project. And on this phase, we'll be installing signals, pedestrian signals, preemption, we're making sure that we put those where necessary. And as everybody can see, we tightened up the radii a lot out there on the corners to make it a lot safer for the pedestrians when they do cross. Unfortunately, when you do these projects, these poles and things are 12 to 16 weeks out at a minimum, so I don't anticipate seeing the final improvements until next spring timeframe, implemented in the spring. So we're looking right now just to go out to bid. And one last thing I would like to point out, it is about $170,000 estimated project, and 74% of that would be paid for with those active transportation funds through ODOT.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. You used the term, I think it was a preemption that you used?
Yes.
And that's, could you explain what that is and how that involves the safety vehicles?
Yes, yeah, sorry about that. Preemption is, it's at a few intersections out there right now. It was just installed along the intersections on Perkins a couple of years ago, when those intersections were improved, the signals were improved out there. What that is, is there's a responder on the vehicles for the fire department right now, and it allows each of the lights to turn red and makes it a four-way stop as they're approaching that intersection. So the cars don't pass through it, and they can get through a lot more safely and quickly. That's also something that we're looking at doing at other locations when we do these upgrades.
Do we do that with police vehicles at all?
At this time, we don't, but that is a topic of conversation that we had during the site selection process for American Brand.
Chief, is that something that other communities do?
Not that I'm aware of. I know the fire service has it, but I'm not sure that the police agencies have them.
Okay.
But we did talk about it because of the school and intersections that we're going to be close to when the new justice center is built, so it might be something that we explore.
Yeah, you folks know a lot more about that than we do, but it sounds like something that'd be worth exploring. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? For Mr. Klein, you indicated the project would likely not be completed until spring. Is that it won't start until then, until the polls are in, or you'll do some early work, and then we can just expect it to be finished when the polls get here?
Through you, Mr. President, most of the legwork is already done. It was done in the first phases of the project. So the final phases would be pouring the foundations, and that's going to be weather-dependent. If they can do it before the bad weather hits, then they'll do it this fall.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Klein, my comment was going to be based on his answer, which was, our engineering department had the foresight to install preemptively conduits and pole wires to accommodate the signalization. So we're not put in the embarrassing position of completing a road project and then going back and sawing the road up to put the signalization in. Our engineering department is very good at that, they do not bring that up often enough, but we spend a few dollars on the front end or the back end of a project to save us literally thousands of dollars and a lot of embarrassment on the next phase of a project, so our thanks to them.
Yeah, you raise a good point. You know, so often there are folks that want to get this particular thing done on one particular street or one particular corner, and as a community, we save so much more money if we let the engineers plan that out so that we do it in sequence, and we spend the least amount of money by touching the underground the fewest number of times. So that's good that you should point that out, so thank you. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
In 2015, it was estimated at over $10 million in 2020. So with the construction costs going up and with the project that size, we wanted to make sure that we looked at the sewer system again so that we didn't over-design it or under-design it. This is also related to our green infrastructure program that we're looking at to make sure that we do appropriate site selection. So what the plan is here is to put several flow meters, 15 flow meters throughout the combined sewer system that will evaluate flow during heavy rain events. That will allow us to maximize our opportunity to reduce the overflows at the outlet, at the outfalls that are scattered along the shore of the bay. This also helps us appropriately size that 10-plus million-dollar project and pick the appropriate sites, not just select a site for green infrastructure because it's available, but select the appropriate sites where we're going to make sure that we maximize our dollars. So the two, the two contracts that we would be looking at today, the first one is with Strand and Associates, that's an engineering firm. They did our green infrastructure plan. They've been very diligent. Their recommendation was to break out the flow metering process and the reason for that was is typically that's included in the engineer's costs, but they're just going to charge an overhead to that sub-consultant and they said if you do two contracts, that could save that overhead cost, which was in the range of about $7,000. So the first contract would be for them to do the oversight, to gather some more documentation, some information to make sure that the model, when we do the updates, hopefully towards the summer of next year, we'll come back with another contract to actually physically perform the model runs and updates and get that information accurate. And the second contract item made on the agenda is for ADS Environmental Services that was selected through the RFP process to actually install the flow meters, maintain the flow meters, and they will be in the sewer system from September through November and then again in the spring. The preferred timeline is three months in the fall, three months in the spring. And we do have an option in there if we don't get enough rain events, which we all know has not been the case recently. But if we don't get enough rain events, we do have an option to add an additional month of monitoring to make sure we don't have to come back to this and redo it.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiner. Mister's, questions or comments? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion in connection with item number seven, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number nine, please.
Item nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with ADS LLC, doing business as ADS Environmental Services of Valley View, Ohio, for the 2018 Combined Sewer Flow Monitoring System Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Mister's having heard this related piece of, this communication, this related piece of legislation, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Now, Mr. Soloway, we have three pieces of legislation that we need to adopt, but they all relate to one communication and the retirement of various notes. They were largely paid them off to some extent. This is what we do every year with the outstanding notes. And then we have some additional, additional note that we are selling, the amount of $2 million to design a landing project. And that funds a piece of legislation that the committee, the commission already approved to compile that. But with that preface, would you?
Yep, so to summarize, there's really three pieces of the legislation and the one piece is just a renewal and pay down of the existing notes that we have outstanding. So we're paying down about a half a million dollars and that's the Bayfront Urban Revitalization, the Venice Road Grade Separation, the Ladder Truck, and the Salt Truck. So that's just a renewal and pay down. And then the two new pieces that you alluded to is the $2 million that we're going to borrow for the landing project and that's for the design of the landing project that was passed in June, Ordinance 18-127 with EDG. And then the other piece that we're including this year is some money for the City Hall Relocation Project. And the pieces that we're including in that right now are, there's, most of them have come through the commission already. I believe there's one or two that'll come the next meeting, but we were far enough that we kind of had an idea of what those amounts were going to be. So the pieces that we've already considered at the table include the security system with Johnson Controls, the network infrastructure with Ohio Telecom, the audiovisual, which was, I believe, last meeting. The two pieces that'll, I think Stu's here, will confirm, it's the next meeting is the generator and the fiber project. I think those are still coming. So those are the pieces we've included right now for the City Hall Relocation Project.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on item, let's see.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Right of order. Need the fiscal officer's certificate and then I can read the first piece. I didn't read it yet.
Oh, I see. Okay. Would you present the fiscal officer's certificate then?
So, okay, so item A, the ordinance that accompanies the fiscal officer's certificate is providing for the issuance and sale of $2,400,000 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of revitalizing the Bayfront Urban Revitalization area by acquiring, clearing, and improving certain properties in that area, undertaking the environmental cleanup and remediation of certain properties in that area, constructing road improvements and related utility infrastructure improvements in that area, and otherwise improving that area. Two, paying a portion of the cost of eliminating grade crossings by constructing the Venice Road Grade Separation Project in cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Three, acquiring a ladder truck for the fire department. And four, acquiring salt trucks for the street department and declaring an emergency. So we first need a motion to accept a certificate.
Would someone care to make such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That certificate is approved, accepted. Item, item 10B, please.
And then, I'm sorry, we need a roll call for the ordinance as well.
I see. All right.
They have to be separate. Motion, yes, I'm sorry, a motion and a roll call on the ordinance. They all have to be separate.
Motion and roll call, so we six?
You have six.
Okay.
Six total.
So the first one was on the motion to accept the certificate and this is on the motion to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Would you poll the commissioners on, oh, I guess we need a motion. Someone care to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
I make the motion to approve ordinance 10A under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the, so what do we, nine votes? Mr. Heber, we need nine votes?
Two, two.
Two each.
Two each.
Two each, okay. So the first one is accept the certificate and the second one is the legislation. So we're now voting on the legislation.
Okay.
Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the legislation, please?
Yeah. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present the certificate in connection with 10B?
Yes, that would be providing for the issuance and sale of $2 million in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of various improvements for the landing as more further described and approved in Ordinance 18-127 and declaring an emergency. Fiscal officer's certificate.
Someone care to make a motion to approve the certificate?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
How on the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman?
We need a separate motion and, okay, Mr. Brady?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted.
Would you present the certificate in connection with 10C?
Yes, that would be providing for the issuance and sale of $546,000 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs associated with the relocation of City Hall and declaring an emergency.
Mister's, would someone care to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second, motion and second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And would someone care to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And that completes our regular items of business and we're going to turn it over to you, Mr. Bookser, but I want to first say, since we put this break this in here, the members of the bicentennial commission are obviously not here. I was and every other resident and visitor and our neighbors to the south and the east and the west were for the festivities over the last weekend. What beautiful weather we had for the parade and what, and for the, for the concert, the fireworks were extraordinary. Those are the best fireworks I've seen, period. And everyone just had a great time. It was pulled off flawless. And my, just hats off to Ms. Briggs and hired bicentennial commission and all the folks that were just, so many people volunteered to make that happen. It really was a great event.
Thank you, Commissioner President Murray, commissioners, audience and staff. I will pass that on to McKenzie tomorrow and I do believe there's actually a bicentennial commission meeting tomorrow, so I can extend that as well to them directly. And that feedback has resonated throughout the community, so it's great to hear that from the very, the table of the city commission that made all that possible. So thank you. I will start my remarks tonight with donations. We have one donation this evening and that's a donation of 16 body worn cameras, which was received from the Erie County Sheriff's Office. It is for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Without objection, the motion to be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Sheriff's Department.
Great. Moving on into another business, the police department and IT will be working to issue an RFP for body worn cameras and management solutions in the near future. The current cameras are beyond their life expectancy and are unable to be purchased any longer by the vendor, L3 Communications. When the Cruiser audio and video system was purchased last year, the next generation, BWC for L3 was supposed to be released in October of last year. L3 has continually pushed off the new cameras due to issues with the technology. A recent communication with L3 has resulted in the learning that there isn't still a firm release date. The current solution is currently outdated, expensive to maintain, and difficult to support. The body worn cameras have become critically important to operations, so we wanted to get started and research to find the best system possible. Chief, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Yeah, we are over a year out. We've been trying to limp through and Stu and Sean have been keeping our body cameras up and running, but we're at a critically low point. The, we can't purchase batteries, we can't purchase replacement body worn cameras to fit our system. The sheriff's office went to a new system, as did Perkins Township and Ottawa County, away from L3 and have a GoPro system right now. So the sheriff's office weren't in need of theirs any longer, so they graciously donated those so that we can keep up and running until we explore the new option.
So did we just get unlucky with the vendor? We've, or is that just all the, all the longer these can be expected to last?
They're only expected to last two years and the, L3 got into the body worn cameras back three or four years ago. They contracted out with an outfit and the agencies have been dissatisfied with the body worn cameras. They were developing their own and they're still struggling with the, I think it's the software, the software to make those run. So over a year, it's been, the can's been kicked down the road and we've made a decision that we can't kick the can down the road any longer. It's unfortunate, but L3's getting hit pretty good from law enforcement and switching their services.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Moving on to the fire department, the Sandusky Fire Department notified, was notified they received the fire prevention and safety grant in the amount of $7,858. So congratulations on that. Also, the finance department, the city of Sandusky audit for the 2017 year was released by the state auditor's office on August 14th and it can be downloaded from their website. Based on the clean audit, the city will once again qualify for the auditor of state award for the 2017 year. The auditor of state award is presented to local governments upon completion of a financial audit that are in compliance with numerous accounting and auditing requirements. So thanks a lot to Hank and his team for both working with the auditors, which I know they do very closely, and also for, you know, another continued year of a clean audit. Moving on to public works, the city will conduct a public auction of surplus equipment along with bicycles on Saturday, October 20th at 9:00 AM in the service center. Additional details, including a list of auction items, will be shared via press release to the event, prior to the event. Also, ODOT plans to close the State Route 2 eastbound ramp to State Route 101 on Wednesday, August 29th for repairs. So that's Wednesday of this week. Detour signs will be posted and the ramp will reopen on Wednesday, August 29th. So is that a one day? So it'll be, it'll be open at the end of the day this week. Also, the Division of Sewer Maintenance successfully replaced 175 feet of sewer main, rebuilt catch basins, repaired manholes on Taylor Street between Columbus and Hayes in preparation for the division of streets and traffic to begin a fill and fill on that street with improvements to begin tomorrow, August 28th. And precision paving, the contractor for the 2018 sidewalk repair and replacement project mobilized today, starting with improvements to Central Park. A ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate the many updates, Central Park is forthcoming with more information to follow. And that'll help complete that project, which is many departments touch as part of the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative for the Garden District Neighborhood. Moving on to community development, housing development and beautification, this is bittersweet news, I guess. The program continues to spark interest within the community. The annual funding of $300,000 for citywide housing projects was fully committed in June of this year. The citywide annual allocation is in addition to one time, $600,000 set aside that was reserved for the selected, six selected Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative neighborhoods and was made by the city commission approximately 18 months ago. The intent of these funds would be to oversee five years of projects in the selected neighborhoods. As of today, the neighborhood initiative funding is 66% committed and has assisted nearly 150 properties, leaving $200,000 for future projects. The neighborhood initiative funding included the following, 17 substantial redevelopment projects totaling $99,000 in city funding, 106 exterior repair and landscaping projects totaling about $228,000 in city funding, and 25 down payment assistance projects totaling approximately $73,000 in city funding. The reason I bring that up tonight is to show that the citywide housing program has been a really great catalyst and has led to a lot of private investment in the city, but is moving, we're moving through those dollars quickly, less than six months within the year. But that also, it looks like if we continue to release the neighborhood initiative funds, that those aren't going to be lasting probably not even the rest of this year, which is an exciting problem to have, but a challenge in that just even in this meeting, I got a text from someone randomly asking if there were still housing dollars available for a house on Madison Street and checked in with Matt to see if that's in our targeted neighborhood or not, but just that obviously we've stumbled upon something that we think is being a real stimulus for that market unless the commission objects, will probably continue to spend down that 200,000 in the neighborhoods targeted for those funds. And then it's really put our thinking caps on for next year to see if there is any way to, to expand that program or just to continue to make the best or adjust how we make grants so that we're targeting it as narrowly as possible to make sure it helps as many people make investments in housing stock in Sandusky.
So the commissioner, the managers asked a question whether we objected to that. Does anybody object? anybody object? I say keep it, keep it up. I mean, as long as we've got the interest and people are making the private investments that justify the city expenditures and we're making progress in the city, we've got momentum. I think we ought to keep it up. Unless there's an objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I don't have an objection, but I would like to at the end of the year, perhaps a presentation, visual that shows the, these projects.
Absolutely.
Much the way we do with the, with the homes project.
Sure.
And, and also some research that indicates what else is going on in terms of, this is meant to stimulate, is intended stimulating the neighborhood. We could, we could approach that by looking at what else is going on in the neighborhood, other homes in terms of improvements. Likewise, the, whether or not the sales, sale of homes is improving in that area, in a given area. The staff can decide what neighborhoods they want to do this, but the concept, that's the only way we know that this is doing anything more than just passing money on to somebody that came and asked for it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, that's, that's a positive thing.
Sure.
The state of purpose is growth.
Absolutely.
So we need to show that at the end of the year, I think.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, I just finished this thought. To your point, Mr. Poole, the, and Mr. Webster, you may be familiar with this. Was that a presentation? Oh, shoot, it was, I can't remember the law firm that puts it on, but you've been to that same program on more than one occasion. But there, I know that in Kaiba County, they have the ability to really zero down, really, really zero down in a couple of block area to see how pricing is changing. And I hear anecdotally from homeowners, realtors and others that prices are moving more in some areas and less in other areas. And I don't know what ability we have to gain access to that same kind of data, but I think there are a lot of analytical tools that are out there to allow us to take a closer look.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you want to?
I just wanted to add, I agree with Commissioner Poole. I think it's a great idea to have a presentation to see where the dollars are spent also and to make sure that, that these dollars are being distributed throughout all six neighborhoods and taking care of all of them, just to kind of see where those dollars are being spent.
Absolutely. And I, through the Commissioners, I can say, one, that we have been doing a good job throughout the program of tracking geographically the distribution of those. And there is some good data there. One, it does show that it is making its way throughout the entire city, which is good, but that also, it seems to be contagious in many ways, meaning like once a project and the sort of the improvement sign shows up in a block, that does seem to trigger word of mouth conversations. I think, Matt, there's one block of Wayne Street between Cable and Osborne, which has seen eight or nine projects happen on that one block alone, which is partially, as remember, we define this as a model block program so that we'd see exactly that. So you'd see that one improvement would trigger a wave of improvements. And I just want to thank Matt and I know Deb Eversall, who's now overseeing that program, is doing an amazing job and building on a lot of work that's done by Ariel and Maria before she left, kind of get that program in place. But I think in two years, we've finally gotten that down to a place where it's being run really efficiently. And we actually had a really good discussion in our neighborhood meeting last week about just that. How do we track where it's making the best difference, how it's making a difference, which between the down payment or the exterior repairs or the substantial repairs. So I think we look forward to kind of getting through this program here. And it sounds like we'll probably do that with a few months to spare so that as we prepare for the 2019 allocation, we can try to find as much data as possible so that we can be targeted. And maybe that is the future of this program, is that we decide where the stimulus is needed most and target the dollars there. Matt, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I would just say, through the Commission Presidents, members of the Commission, I know typically on an annual basis, normally the first or second week in January, and we can change the date at the will of the Commission, we generally will do a presentation that both sort of highlights the new program year guidelines and any changes we've made, but then also a year in review. That's typically been done for our citywide funding. We could certainly add in a layer, if you will, that talks about sort of the neighborhood funding as well as a parallel to our citywide funding, both with sort of geographical representation of where those dollars have gone and what those have leveraged. And then we can certainly speak to sort of the advancements, not exclusively because of our housing programs, but partially because of our housing programs as it relates to reduced days on markets, increased sales prices, increased home values, permit fees and revenues coming into the city based on the amount of construction work. We can certainly add some of that into a presentation, whether that be December or January. We'll defer to the Commission.
So, you know, I think it bears mentioning that we want to go, want to go back to basics, right? I mean, so this is a business that we want to get out of eventually. This is a business that we're in right now because we, we had a lot of foreclosures in our city. We've got a lot of legacy properties. We've got a lot of houses that were abandoned and we're making great progress in tearing those down. But we want to eventually get out of this business when the market, the market forces should take over and it will allow us to withdraw from this. So I think we should spend the money while we have it and stimulate the market while we can. But eventually, I mean, this isn't a program, this isn't a program that should be around here 10 years from now, I would hope, but we'll see. Famous last words, right, Mr. Poole?
I won't be here. Maybe you will be.
Just continuing.
I know we keep interrupting your report.
No, no, that's, this is, I like the dialogue. And just through the Commission President to the Commission, I do think, you know, maintaining the aging housing stock of a city is always best done through a strong housing market. But obviously, we know Sandusky is a very diverse city in the type of housing that exists. And I know with the Western Reserve Report that was done three or four years ago showed, well, we had 200 or 300 demolitions. We probably had 2000 or 3000 houses that were distressed. And I think those, those houses that will be in neighborhoods that make a bigger comeback, the market will absolutely improve those, those prices. And both Matt and I in neighborhoods that we've worked in previously, in the Cleveland area, have seen what happens when the numbers go from making sense to not making sense based on market demand. And that can be very positive. And so I think whether it's a matter of, you know, tailoring these programs or even being able to eliminate them to the places where they'll continue to make sense, it's probably, you know, we talked about the South Side a lot, you know, maybe there's a point five or 10 years from now where the center of the city is taking care of itself, but you can really target these to doing housing in those neighborhoods. And so we do think these are really valuable resources, but to your point, should take them on that year to year, you know, year to year basis to determine that, to the extent these resources exist at all, they're absolutely targeted to continuing to make Sandusky's housing stock desirable for people from all walks of life. And speaking and sticking with the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative, we are one year into the Sandusky Neighborhood Implementation, slightly over a year at this point. And to commemorate that, Commissioner Waddington has been talking with Talon Flor, our Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator. We have a few things planned. One is on October 4th, Talon will be making a presentation at the Rotary Club that'll be a one year in review to talk about some of the success of the Neighborhood Initiative, both from a housing and a project perspective, as well as to talk about what people can expect in year two and beyond in that program. And then Dave had the great idea of having Talon come to a Commission meeting maybe once a month for the next six months to give a project report out on each of the six neighborhoods as a way to get that going. So we're very excited about that progress. You're starting to see some of those physical projects, whether it was, you know, Aaron mentioning the Central Park improvements in that neighborhood, or the Pocket Park that was put in, the former bank site at the corner of Erie Boulevard and Cleveland Road. Those are small projects, but that we can tell from the feedback that we are getting from folks in those neighborhoods, they're noticing that difference. And if we're getting a few of those done each year and we continue making those investments for five or 10 years, we think we'll be really proud of where our neighborhoods are at. So thank you guys for your support of that. And we look forward to both on October 4th at the Rotary Club as well as at this room throughout the next six months to really tell that story. Moving on to the Planning Department, the regular planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 26th at 4:30 p.m. in the First Floor Conference Room. Also, the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 20th at 4:30, also in the First Floor Conference Room. There is a historic tax credit workshop being given by Designing Local for property owners with buildings that are historically listed. It's free and open to the public and will be held at Boomtown Coffee on August 28th. And again, this is for people who have historic properties that they're looking at how to potentially utilize tax credits. And that'll take place on August 28th tomorrow from 12:30 to 2:00 p.m. at Boomtown Coffee and presented as a free program to the public by Designing Local. I believe that concludes my remarks for this evening. Oh, we also have the Public Art and Cultural Commission will be here tomorrow at 5:30 p.m. in this chamber, in the Commission Chambers. The final plan will be presented to the Arts and Cultural Commission tomorrow evening. That's August 28th at 5:30 p.m. in the City Commission Chambers. And that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Commissioners, questions or comments for the manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Picking back on, when we were talking earlier today, when we go out in the neighborhoods like Campbell Street and that, I had mentioned to some of the Commissioners, could we get ahold of the residents and maybe instead of one of us, get some kids that live in that neighborhood to come out, Central Park, I'm sure that neighborhood, if we went around, spend an hour and talk to some neighbors, have them come over for this. Because it's their dedication, the way I look at it, in the neighborhoods, we're trying to really push the neighborhoods, our community right now. So different areas, I think it'd be neat to have content residents to come out to this.
I think that'd be great. So I hope we do that. Additional comments or questions for the City Manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'd be interested in having the staff or Mr. Webster investigate the possibility of putting body cameras on the coat inspectors. Next year, just let us know budget time. I want you to look at that. I think it might be of value.
We can discuss when we sit down next.
Okay. We got some feedback too about what other communities are doing in that regard. Maybe that's common practice, maybe it's not. I can see, I can see the benefits to that.
Sure, absolutely.
Anybody else? Lastly, would you just, so I don't have to answer questions, could you, bring us up to date where we're at on this smoking petition? So the public knows and they don't have to call me.
The, through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole and potentially either Hank or Trevor would be the best to handle this. But in summary, from my perspective, there was an issue with the form of the petitions as submitted. And based on our past precedent of how we have to handle when that happens, Hank rejected those petitions. I don't know if either Hank or Trevor want to speak further on that.
That's correct. There's a provision in the Charter, Section 13, that requires any initiative petitions to require the enacting language, be it ordained by the City of Sandusky. And it was missing that language. So unfortunately, I have the discretion to reject them and I rejected them.
Okay. There seems to be some question about the number of signatures. Did this go to the Board of Elections? Did they?
It did.
So they did certify and?
Correct. As part of the Board's certifying signatures, they come back to me for like a validity sufficiency review to make sure there's no, that it contains the correct title, text, context of the ordinance that they're proposing. And that's when it's obvious that they did not include that enacting clause. So that would prohibit it from.
Other than the first, first three, five words of the, okay. What happens next?
You'd have to ask the group. There's nothing, it's not on my end, so.
Mr. Chairman, well, I'll wait for new business. This is, and I'll take what I have from there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
So we're on the City Manager's Report. Additional questions or comments for the City Manager, or is it an item of old or new business?
I'm just going to ask a question about what they're talking about now. So you can put it however you want to do it. Hank, you said that there was a issue with the, what was it?
The enacting clause.
The enacting clause.
Yes.
But the enacting clause is what? I mean, from what I read, and you guys are much smarter than I am, an enacting clause is just a style clause. I mean, it has no effect by the Ohio Divise Code on the body or content.
That I would defer to Trevor, which I think he would disagree with that.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Lockhart. The enacting clause is the basis for the power in which you are bringing forth this legislation. So enacting clause isn't a ministerial duty. It isn't a small thing. It's an important process. And it is an important concept to be in all legislation.
Other questions or topics for the City Manager? Otherwise, we will turn to old business. Anyone having any items of old business? I, Mr. Poole, you correctly pointed out that in addition to the mistake that I made tonight, I made a mistake two weeks, two meetings ago, we were talking about the special improvement to the legislation. And I kind of lost track of where we were. So we need to have a formal motion to put the nails in the coffin of Dracula. And Mrs. Cresser, I would like to ask you to, since the motion was still left there and it's still out there, we need a roll call vote on the, on the second reading of the special improvement district legislation. So I'd like you to call the roll in that regard, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
You have, I'm just a stickler for detail. You have to have.
You might be a stickler.
You gotta have discussion. You can't just skip, you can't skip discussion.
I don't think so. Mr. Trevor, or Mr. Hayburger, am I required to have discussion?
I believe we already had the discussion that was to the point of roll call.
Do you have something you want to add, Mr. Poole? I'm not trying to cut you off.
Just, one question. I was not here. I apologize. The information that was provided by Mr. Earhart, we've had two weeks to absorb it. Is that, is it accurate that was presented by the citizens? Is there, does anyone disagree with it? Because it changes what your thoughts are, my thoughts are.
We presented a lot, a lot of information. I think it's a little unfair. Four weeks later to say, does everybody agree with it? I agree with what? I mean, that's, that's too broad of a question for the, to ask the staff to answer.
Is it accurate that the bulk of the money that would be paid in taxes fell on the residents of the Chesapeake and the Hubbard Building? Is that an accurate statement? As opposed to, that's really what I'm talking about. The distribution of the tax seemed to be different than what we expected.
I know.
So enough of those accurate or not?
I know we're calling, making that. Perhaps it's bad. I don't think it's an accurate statement, what you just said. Mr. Webster, can you answer the question, was the bulk of the tax to be paid by the Chesapeake residents and the?
The Commission President to Commissioner Poole, there was a lot of information in the report from Mr. Earhart and without again having it in front of us or going through. I know that we looked at it closely the days following that. And we did see some discrepancies in the report, but by and large, we never shied away from, in fact, met several times with the Chesapeake Condo Association, the Hubbard, that certainly there was a lot of those funds that collectively were being paid by individual units. We thought that the benefit of rising property values downtown and particularly the Chesapeake, the units are, are selling really quickly and for a lot more than they were selling for a couple of years ago, and more than offset the additional small amount that they would be funding for additional improvements in downtown. But we also told them, you know, that that was a community process and we weren't even sure that, in fact, one of the things I said was, we're not certain that we'll be able to pass this in the democratic process, is that you have a lot of cracks at this to determine if you object to it still. And it came out they objected. So again, I, I know that we reran numbers and that things like the specific amount that was average per unit, we disagreed with what was in that report. But I'm not going to be able to comment generally. I don't think it was filled with inaccuracies. I think it was, I think it took factual information and did its best to make a specific case with that information. But it was nothing that we weren't absolutely transparent about throughout the processes. We spoke with Chesapeake condo owners and others in the downtown district.
Anything further, Mr. Poole?
No, because it won't change the vote. We're fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
You saying we're voting on the motion, I would assume the motion would have been the motion that I made last time. Is that correct?
The motion that I am asking for a roll call vote on is the motion to approve the special improvement district legislation on the second reading.
Last time I made a motion on the second reading.
Then if you were the one who made the motion, then it's your, it's your motion.
I just wanted to know.
Okay. I just don't remember that. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
Stained.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Abstained.
Mr. Poole?
Nope.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
Okay, that horse is dead. Other items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I would like to make a motion for an executive session regarding eminent litigation.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Mr. Brady?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for an executive session regarding personnel.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I had a conversation with you, City Manager, Webster, and then Commissioner Brady, I guess, the most conversation about this. I would like to have a, just look into if we could have a time capsule, put in the New City Hall from the 2018 events. If, I believe your wife took some great pictures, Martha?
Yeah.
And I'm sure there's a lot of them out there. I talked to Mackenzie Spriggs last week and she was excited about it, at least during the conversation. But I'm not the one to do the collection or gathering of all that. It would be up to them folks. But I, I think it would be neat since it's our 200th anniversary to have something like that. Maybe in 50 years or 100 years when we're all gone, somebody could open up and look back, you know, what, like you said earlier, what a great weekend and what a great year so far between all the events that we've had celebrating our city. And I'm going to pass the rest of the comments on in my time to Mr. Brady.
Yeah, I think that, Mr. Chairman.
It's Brady.
I think that, I think this is an idea that will allow us to kind of memorialize what's going on here in the bicentennial year and might seem trivial pursuit at the moment, but I think 40 or 50 or 60 years from now, people will look back, maybe 100 years from now, people will look back and realize how significant this was. I know for most of us, for many of us sitting at this table, we kind of got an education on the history of this city in this last year. We got to look at things like, you know, how the downtown was developed. We got to look at, one big point was the Colorado Cemetery. Had no one chronicized those things at the time, we wouldn't have that to look back on today. So I think it, I think it almost becomes somewhat of an obligation on our part to memorialize what's going on this year. And maybe as Commissioner Waddington says, put it in a time capsule and let's set a date on it. And those that are left behind can, those that are still around 50 years from now can spend the time digging it up and, and continuing the history.
Mr. Lasco, what seems to fall into your wheelhouse, is that something that's anticipated?
Through you, Mr. President, members of the Commission, I think there is certainly openness from it. All we would need is a little bit of detail on potential location and depending on how it would be constructed in the actual facility, depending on who would need to actually sign off on it just because it is a state historic tax credit project. So we would just need a little bit of detail on, again, how and where it may be relocated or located so we can determine who may need to weigh in on it. But I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I have some concerns and thoughts about the outcome, but where the cost is going to come to the city dealing with this smoking petition. We've established that they had sufficient signatures and that the citizens have stated that they'd like that smoking ban put on the, on the ballot, the ballot. I realize we're at the point where the technicality that we found deficient in their, in the petition, if we go to court, we're going to have to pay for that. And I'm concerned about the court costs considering the fact that at the end of the day, if we lose, we lose and we're out of it. If we win, we still don't win because they simply rewrite the petition and the same six, the same 900 people sign it. And we ultimately put this on the ballot anyway. It, don't need a discussion now, but I want to recognize that, that this is not, when the citizens ask us to put something on the ballot and that many people sign the, sign it, they've met the threshold. I think we certainly cannot honor the petition because it was wrong, but we do have the ability to address the concern. And we may end up be better off putting it on, on the ballot ourselves, whether it's the following election or not, because I think we're beyond the time to put it on this election. But it's not going to go away. And I see no point in paying squires and Sanders 600 bucks an hour or whatever the rate is to defend something that ultimately we're going to have to put on the ballot anyway. Just my thoughts. And let's think about it going forward. Or comment. It's going to get on the ballot, it would appear, they have the signatures. And it will probably grow because more taxpayers will realize if we duck behind this loophole, that we are actually just defying what the, what the public asks. There's more signatures on this than necessary and we're not going There's more signatures on, on this than, than necessary and we're not gonna win this in the long run. We should just allow the citizens to speak. If we believe that the legislation is what the public wants, then we should just put it out there and don't worry that the cost is anything.
Well, Ms. Poole, we have democratic process. The commissioners were elected and we were elected to make decisions and we voted on that and we passed that legislation. And I understand that a significant number of people don't agree with that. That is their right and the petition process is their right, of course. But following the law is not a trivial matter. It's not a loophole and I think you, I think it denigrates the law to call that a loophole. Mr. Hayberger has said that we need to follow the specifics of the charter. It wasn't, it didn't happen. I was surprised by the result, but I think we have to follow the law as our law director and finance director interpreted. It's not something that the commission decides, it's something that they decide per the charter. So, those are my thoughts. Any other items of new business? We will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission and any items related to the city, please share with us your name, address, and your thoughts.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'm a little confused about this grant coming out of the Chesapeake TIF. When we were at the coffee meeting, like I said, the city manager said that they were taking 10% of that Chesapeake TIF for redevelopment grants. That was not discussed up here. It was not voted on. Seven commissioners didn't vote on that. So, what's going on with this? Does the school have, have to approve this? Does that TIF have to be amended for this? Legally, I would think there'd be something going on here with that. Dennis, you told us at the last meeting that that TIF is restricted, but it looks like the city can make up their own rules taking grants out of a TIF. How legal is this?
We've been over the TIF so many times. I don't, I apologize, I do not understand your question. I mean, the TIF has been, the, the TIF is what it is, it's limited to where it can be spent. We've gone through the process of getting the schools sign off on it, like, could you take another run at your question, because I'm just not following what it is?
Is that allowable for grants to come out of the TIF? I've never heard of that before.
Well.
Don't we have to go about, go according to the Ohio Revised Code? Seems like the city's making up their own rules here.
I don't think that we are. I think we are following the Ohio Revised Code. I see no reason to believe otherwise.
And if you're gonna take 10%, if this is legal and you're gonna take 10% of that TIF, why didn't seven commissioners vote on this? Why are three or four commissioners meeting somewhere or doing business through email or whatever, they're not doing business up here by voting on that? That's what I want to know.
Your insinuation is not well taken. The suggestion that the commission is meeting illegally and violating the public meeting laws is wrong. It has no foundation. And if you have another question, I prefer that you go on to that question, please.
Well, I just never heard of a grant coming off of a TIF. I've heard of infrastructure, demolition, et cetera, but not a grant.
I, I, I believe, unless someone in the staff tells me, Mr. Lasco or Mr. Hayberger, that we acted somehow in violation of the ORC, that we in fact followed it to a T. So, Lasco follows those things pretty well. Is there any reason that we may not do what we did, which is to issue a grant out of the TIF?
That's through you, Mr. President. To Ms. Johnson, the simple answer to your question is yes, it's an appropriate use via this type of TIF. There's multiple types of TIF under the Ohio Revised Code. This is a TIF that allows for subsidies for private construction.
Okay, it comes under subsidies for private construction then. Okay. Okay, now, the 10% that you're gonna peel off the TIF, you know, don't seven commissioners have to vote on that, taking 10% off of that TIF?
We vote on every piece of legislation.
You did not vote on this 10%. I, I'm here every meeting.
We vote, we voted on, you're talking about the, you're talking about the grant for the Cook Building, correct?
I understand that, but Mr. Whoopsir said he's taking, he's gonna take 10% off of the TIF. Doesn't there have to be a vote for that to be peeled off for something like that?
But I think Mr. Whoopsir was indicating was that in general is what his thought process is. But the commission still retains the full right to vote on each and every expenditure out of the TIF. So, we could make it 15%, we could make it 5%.
So, you do have to vote on it, the percentage? No, you don't?
Not to vote on the percentage, that's his aspiration. What we have to vote on is each of the pieces of legislation. Maybe that ends up being 10%, maybe it's some other number.
So, that's yet to come up to vote, vote on? Is that what you're saying?
This commission and other commissions into the future will continue to vote on expenditures out of the TIF. Yes, that will be an ongoing process until all such time as that money is fully committed.
Okay, but you've already extended two grants on intent resolution for two grants, one for the Fike Building, you know, and one for this Hographie guy, okay?
Both with contingencies.
Okay, you've already done that?
Yes.
Okay, so, you, you're ahead of the game here without voting on the percentage that you're gonna take out for this. You're already extended two grants out of that.
That's correct.
And you didn't vote on the percentage, that's what I'm saying. Seven commissioners should have voted on the percentage that you were gonna do before you gave out these two grants. You never discussed that in front of the public here, never. That was a surprise.
It's not set in stone, Mrs. Johnson.
What I'm saying is you're, you're ahead of yourself legally.
Well, you're wrong, so.
So.
Do you have another question? Anyone else having any comments for the commission?
Kim Everhart, 618 Sycamore Line. I just want to talk about the smoking ban repeal. I am not a smoker, but I am strongly disappointed with you, Mr. Murray. I feel like, yes, the wording may have been off by a little bit, there may have been missing a couple of words at the beginning, but I personally collected signatures. We did not, we didn't mislead any, anyone in the public when we collected signatures. They all saw the paperwork, they signed their name, they all are registered voters and I think that you all, yes, you all voted on it and you voted one way or another way, but as a responsive government, seeing that we have the support that we have behind us and seeing the number of people in the community that want this taken to a vote, you could also be the one to stand up and take it to the vote. That's what a responsive government does and you are not being a responsive government.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
No, this is public comment. You wanna argue with people, you can do it.
No, I don't wanna argue, I just, I, I'm thinking about Mrs. Go ahead. No, it's all fine.
Ma'am, do you have something to say?
Well, good evening, my name is Shamika Owens, 1126 Sycamore Line. My first apology is coming here dressed accordingly, some my apologies. I was in the middle of teaching my nephew how to ride his bike and 20 minutes before the meeting, I got an email from Mr. Brady and I said I better high-tail it in here. So, again, my apologies. Mr. Brady, do I have permission to read your, your email?
Sure.
Okay. So, what, two weeks ago when you guys met, I had some concerns as far as with my husband and his denial with the city license. So, I'm just gonna read like two emails, the first one that I sent to Mr. Brady and then his reply back, if that's okay? I said, hello, Mr. Brady. First of all, I sent this Wednesday, August 15th at 2:59 PM. I said, hello, Mr. Brady, let me first thank you for listening to my concerns. Also, I want to inform you that there are two Shamika Moores and that we both rented from you, but I was the good one and I rented at 2618 Pioneer Trail, apartment 507. I then went on to say, down to business, my husband was denied a total of four licenses through the city based on actions that were false. As of today's date, we have not been able to submit our proof that shows that no rules on his behalf was broken and we are asking for a meeting in order to submit this proof and voice our side of things. Thank you for your time in this matter. Humbly and respectfully submitted, Shamika Owens. So, Mr. Brady did reply back to me on today and he said, Ms. Moore, thank you for your letter. He said, I gathered significant information regarding the denial of our city to issue contractor's license and a building permit for the property of 937 West Washington. It appears that one of the reasons for this denial was that the failure to obtain the necessary bond for each for the license that you were seeking. Each license requires separate bonds. Additionally, you continue to work after a stop work order had been issued for this property. The denial of the building permit appears to be based on your failure to provide the necessary structural engineering drawings to support the work that needs to be performed. Additionally, it is obvious to me that you have ignored a stop work order from the cities of Sandusky's Building Department pertaining to the work that was performed without a permit. It is my opinion that the Building Department has acted in an appropriate manner and I support their position. I cannot imagine scheduling a meeting with myself on this issue would be productive considering the facts of this case. Richard R. Brady, Vice President, City, Sandusky of City Commission. So, my only concern was that we still have not submitted any documentation to you to show our side of what happened along with the other witnesses that can verify what we're stating. So, in all due respect, I wasn't just requesting just like, just you, all due respect, I was saying, any one of the seven commissioners that would all come and listen and see the documentation from the pictures that we have to the statements that we have from the people in the neighborhood to everything that proves that this did not occur. So, I'm just here asking today, why are we not able to have this meeting? That's it, thank you.
Mr. Poole.
Ms., Ms. Moore's issue was that she, the evidence indicates that she didn't do some things and we won't accept the documentation that shows that she did it. Is that really what we're doing?
I don't think she submitted it to Mr. Brady. I don't, that was not.
I think she requested to do that and, and the answer was, there's no point in talking to you as opposed to, please send me the information.
Two different things, to send information and to have a meeting.
Well, it's a difference, two different things, the saying, please send me the information, I won't meet with you and it will not be productive to meet with you and leave it at that. Mr. Chairman, these folks that come here are not lawyers and they don't, they have layman's understanding of what's going on. This, this particular woman, I had no thoughts on this until she went up there, has offered as best she can without having legal representation to say, look, you made a mistake, we did not do what you said and we have the documentation. And our position is, we've declared that you are in violation and therefore there's no reason to speak. And I think that's probably needs to be, we, we, I think at this point, something needs to be done about it. Dealing with Mrs. in, in the back with Sharon, she simply doesn't understand why you did something. If there's a law that says you may use the money for this, simply showing it to her would have ended all this. She didn't know where to look and she couldn't find it and said, why did you do it? And, and just beating around the bush and saying that we're certain that we followed all regulations is just in a, I find it to be disingenuous way to do business as a, as a, as a government. It's supposed to be trying to help, help citizens get through this. And that's all I'll say on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I don't believe that it is the role of a city commissioner to referee issues between our citizens and our Building Department. And I, I was pleased that you communicated to me, Ms. Moore, the request for a meeting. So, I reached out to our Building Department and they provided me with a booklet of information on this issue. And I reviewed that as impartially as I possibly could and I found out two things. I found out that, that nowhere have you submitted the necessary requirements to get licensed, nor have you been issued a building permit for a very valid reason, because you failed to provide structural engineered drawings to make that repair. While this was going on, you defied a building order to stop work. That is, that is in the report. And, and see, here's, here's, this is not the appropriate venue for us to be debating citizens on Building Department.
Let's stop right now because we are not an adjudicative body and we are not going to resolve this issue here.
Agreed.
This is a, this is an opportunity for public comment. Ms. Moore made her comments, I understand her position. I'm not able to help you because of the conflict we identified the last time and we're not gonna go through this piece by piece and take the evidence here. It's not what we do. Yes, Ms. Moore? Please.
I understand that you do have a booklet, but you do not have our booklet. The booklet that you have, Mr. Brady, if you look at the pictures, some of the dates are not on here. The paper, the paperwork and stuff that we have, have dates and everything that shows the last day that my husband did it work. The date that the order was posted states the 20th, but it was only posted on the 26th and I have an email from Mr. Scott Thomas here. So, I understand that you do have that documentation. If I was you and I read that, I'd be like the same thing, but you just do not have our documentation and it's always two sides to the story.
I see.
And we did see, we did submit the structural drawings, we think we're a structural engineer out of our own pocket. When we got ready to submit those drawings, Mr. Tom said they were not dark enough and I can't read them. So, when I offered to draw the lines darker, he wouldn't, he wouldn't take it. That's why we have to go to action. So, it's two sides to the story, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
It seems like the citizens here to comply in some, in some form or fashion and, and the city is here, is here to, to follow the rules of our code enforcement, but we're also here to help you comply with that. And if, it seems like you want to comply with that, and I've not known anybody in code enforcement or anywhere else not to be open to working with any citizen here. So, probably it's not with Mr. Brady or one of us necessarily that you want to talk to, it may be somebody in code enforcement, there's a supervisor there that would probably sit down with you or in building that would probably sit down and work step by step to get you in compliance as to what you need to do, because that's all it sounds like you're doing, am I right? So, it's probably just an issue that you just want to work through and show them that you have the right documents and if there was a stop work order, you need, obviously you need to cure those problems that you have, which it sounds like you want to do. So, we'd rather have you, you know, save a building or, or comply with us rather than not comply with us, I think.
But, Mr. Commissioner, Lockhart, before I even came to you guys, I tried to set me and go through that protocol, that's why I came here.
You know what? I would, I would say that Mr. Whoopsir is our chief administrator there, his head's down, but I'm sure his head's up into anything that you want and you probably should see Mr. Whoopsir and, and Mr. Lasco and see if you could work that out with them, I'm sure. And then maybe come back to us if you can't work out anything.
I don't think his head was down, I think he was listening intently, but.
No, I sit down, but you know.
Okay. Are there, anyone else wishing to address the commission this evening?
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. It's been stated that we had our petition wrong because it doesn't start with, be it ordained by the citizens of Sandusky, something in that order. So, the city's gonna throw out 900 signatures. But it was put in the paper that because that wasn't in there, we misled people. We didn't mislead anyone. I didn't mislead anyone. It makes it sound like we did it wrong. It makes it sound like we were underhanded and we were playing dirty and we did not. And all I can say is, we'll take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? And we will take a short recess and take off the two executive sessions. And we will take a short recess and take up the two executive sessions.